You all have Zoom pulled up. It's up and running for you, isn't it?
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We have one board member who is participating via Zoom, so I will be taking roll call votes on all votes so that we can make sure to have it reflected correctly in the record. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes? The meeting's held October 26th and November 4th.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, I'll take roll call. Board member Tulkey. Board member Baker.
Aye.
Yes. Board member Ryder.
Aye.
Board member Parker.
Aye.
And board member Mickelson.
Aye. The minutes are approved for both meetings.
Did we have anyone wishing to address the board? We'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Board member Tulkey. I'll move on. Board member Baker.
Aye.
Board member Ryder.
Aye.
Board member Parker.
Aye.
Board member Mickelson.
Aye.
And board member Tulkey.
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda's approved. Good news report, please.
Good evening to you all. It is a short week in the Sioux Falls School District this week, Wednesday. Our students and staff will not be in school and our offices will be closed to observe Veterans Day. 2020 marks the 75th anniversary of the end of World War II, the 70th anniversary of the beginning of the Korean War, and the 30th anniversary of both the end of the Panama invasion and the beginning of Desert Shield. The freedoms we all enjoy, such as those we are experiencing here tonight, like reciting the Pledge of Legions, providing public comment, attending safe and welcoming schools, are all directly tied to the sacrifices made by the brave men and women who have served our country. While the exact number is uncertain, the Sioux Falls School District proudly employs active duty and reserve members of the military. While we couldn't get the exact number, the National Center for Education Statistics says 110,000 of the nation's 5.1 million teachers have served in the military prior to serving in a school. It goes on to say 2.3% of public school teachers are veterans. At the last meeting, we shared with you that the district employs 1,804 teachers, so if we apply the 2.3%, that's about 42 teachers. Many more staff, of course, in other employee groups like education assistants, child nutrition staff, custodians, bus drivers, and even some of our current principals have served in the military and served in an active role. Tonight, we honor those brave men and women. Their character-building courage and commitment are the same traits that we hope to instill in our students, in our classrooms. So we salute all military veterans, but especially those who choose to follow up that service to our country by serving the Sioux Falls Public Schools. We encourage students and staff to consider Wednesday more than just a day off. We encourage them to spend time reflecting and thanking a special veteran in their life. Perhaps that veteran or a veteran is standing at the head of their classroom or the lunch line. So just our thanks to the military folks who make up the ranks of the Sioux Falls School District as well.
Thank you. Great reminder for our students and family and everybody watching today about Wednesday being Veterans Day and to acknowledge all those people who've made those sacrifices for our country. No new conflicts of interest represented to the board. We'll move on to approval of the consent agenda. Item 8A through E. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Board member Tulkey.
Aye.
Board member Baker.
Aye.
Board member Ryder.
Aye.
Board member Parker.
Aye.
And board member Mickelson.
Aye.
We'll move on to the supplemental consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve items 9A, 1 through 3 to Sanford Health?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Board member Tulkey.
Aye.
Board member Baker.
Aye.
Board member Parker.
Aye.
Board member Ryder.
Staying.
Board member Mickelson abstain. That passes with three aye votes and two abstentions from board member Ryder and board member Mickelson. On to reports of the superintendent.
Good evening. Tonight, I bring you the ACT, SAT, and the NCRC report for the Sioux Falls School District. That report follows the district priority area one, providing a rigorous and effective engaging curriculum and instruction for all students, looking to close the achievement gap and find pathways for students. Our ACT, SAT, and NCRC report. Data represents the students of the graduating class of 2020 from the Sioux Falls School District. Any student that is a sophomore, junior, or senior can take that, one of those respective tests, anytime within their time in high school, and often they take them more than once, so they get that best score that helps get them into the next post-secondary institution of their choice. So the class of 2020 saw a decrease in the number of the students who took or participated in the ACT assessment prior to graduation, and this participation rate decreased 8.2% to 59.3%. And there were some rescheduling things of the ACT for that graduating class, but most of those students would have taken that test prior to that. So we recognize that there are many universities across the state that have other admission policies, so by submitting their Smarter Balance scores, they can get in. And so looking at that in the last five years, a substantial number of schools have joined in on that, including the South Dakota Public Universities. However, of the 49% of the 2020 graduates who took it nationally, took that ACT, that participation rate continued to decrease, and that's that national level. But if we look at our students, the Sioux Falls School students, we have a 48.1%, so that increase of those students scoring a 24 or higher is higher than our 18, 19 graduating class. So those that did take it did score higher than the previous year. Now, if we look at the demographics, the profile of the student taking the ACT exam is shown on the screen here as compared to that graduating class. And so when we look at that, we can see that there was a decrease in all graduates taking that ACT. We'll move into the subsets of those scores for those within that ACT, and the English subset score decreased from 22.1 to 21.8. The achievement places them above the state and national average and well above the benchmark score for the college readiness of 18 in this area. This is the lowest sub-score for the Sioux Falls School District, and it has been decreasing slightly over the past three years. Next is a math subset score, and those remained flat in 2020, while above the benchmark, colleges readiness score of 22, we scored at 22.6, which remains significantly higher than the state and national averages. Reading subset scores for the 2020 Sioux Falls graduate decreased 3/10 to 23.2, well over the state and national averages. These scores reflect a group of students who are collectively ready for college-level courses, as the average score is 1.2 points higher than the benchmark score. And science, the subset scores decreased 2/10 to 23, which is equal to that benchmark of 23. Again, students in Sioux Falls score better than the average than other students in the state or nation. And then we look at the composite score, and that district average composite score decreased 2/10 to 22.8. It is also well above the state and national scores. And when we look at this chart, the college readiness, the percent by sub-test, the chart below reflects the percentage of Sioux Falls District students who meet the individual content benchmarks, as well as the percentage that meet all four benchmarks, and all percentages are above that state average. So as students take the ACT, the exam collects background information from the students in a self-reported format in order to compare the assessment results against those who took core curriculum or the core or more, as they say, to claim those that have taken less than the core curriculum, and the percentage of students taking the exam as required for the college entrance or the core or more category. And when we think of the core or more, the core or more results correspond to students taking four or more years of English and three or more years of math, social studies, and science. And when we look at that information there, you can see our students, the district average is 22.8. Those students that took the core or more is 23.1. Additionally, some students take the SAT. Sioux Falls School District had 53 students from the graduating class of 2020 that took the SAT exam, and 92 of them met the ERW bench and 92 of them met the ERW benchmark of 85%. And the math benchmark with 83% making both of those. And the NCRC is an exam that we have added to help support those students as they get out into the workforce. And we have heard from students who have earned the certificate for the NCRC that the employers do give them an increase in pay. Hy-Vee, one of the local employers in the area, is one of those agencies. And so we've heard that from students that that has been a benefit for them. So during the 18, 19 school year, 882 students took the exam, and 88% of them earned the silver level certificate or above. And Sioux Falls had 59 achieve the gold or platinum level certificate, and 10% more than the state average. So we continue to see an increase in that. Our students finished that the last week of October. And with that, the students in the Sioux Falls School District continue to perform above the state and national averages. Based on these results, a high value can be placed on the rigor and depth of curriculum offered in the Sioux Falls School District. District employees, we will continue to use this data to look at the best way to prepare our students as they move into post-secondary and into that career workforce. And with that, I stand by for any questions.
Thank you so much. So last week in October is the NCRC. And so the juniors or who?
Yes, juniors, yes.
Just took that then?
They just took that. And so we'll get those results probably by the end of November. We'll get to see how they did, those students. And then they have the opportunity also to take, we take the SMRT or the South Dakota Assessment in the spring, too.
So all of our classes have been able to take that since it's in October, since we were in school in October.
Correct. That didn't affect us at all last year. Correct.
And with ACT and SAT now, even before COVID, some schools were starting to eliminate that as a factor in doing school. Is that contributing to students not taking as much as well as? Or is it hard to know at this point?
It is hard to know. You know, when I don't have to take that extra exam to get into a local university, some students choose not to take that because they can get in with their South Dakota Assessment test data. So that automatic admittance, yes.
Is that the South Dakota schools only?
I believe so, yes.
The SMRT balance. And our counselors are working with our students of color to make sure they know the options and that, so we can push that, those numbers on.
Correct. Each high school has fee waivers that are available for any student. And so the counselors work with those, with any student who would desire to take the ACT or the SAT. And they have those fee waivers. And then it also provides them that opportunity for transcripts to go to the universities of their choice, up to six of them.
I think I've seen some of our local, I've seen some of our local universities even saying this year that the ACT is waived just because classes get canceled or people are on quarantine or sick and can't attend. And so I won't be surprised if when we get this report again next year, we see another decrease in that participation, both because it's not required and just because I think financially and time-wise, it's kind of a risk to sign up for some of these if people are worried about not being able to attend. And if the opportunity is still there for them to attend the university of their choice with their other scores, then it makes sense that they might just bypass it if they don't need it, so.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Seeing that, oh, go ahead.
Well, an observation is that we were, we did measure above the national and state average and above all the subsets. That's, that would encourage us as a district to just remain committed to determining our own goals and not letting the goal of just being above the state and national average. Because there were some subsets where we did see some decreases. And in the current climate and what we're talking in terms of ACT and not knowing what that's going to mean as a measurement tool for ACT and SAT in the future, just keep that in back of our heads to keep moving forward in terms of what we need to do as a district for our success.
Agreed. Continue to look at high-quality instruction for all students and how do we help support everyone with the skills that they need to move forward. And we move forward as a leading district.
Exactly. Thanks. Thank you. Do I have a motion to acknowledge the 2020 ACT, SAT, and NCRC report?
So moved, second.
I have a motion and a second. Board member Tulkey.
Aye.
Board member Baker.
Aye.
Board member Ryder.
Aye.
Board member Parker.
Aye.
Board member Mickelson.
Aye.
The report is acknowledged. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're ready for you, Todd.
Oh, I didn't know if he was, I was just opening everything on my computer, so. I'm sorry. You go ahead. I just am used to you going, so.
Sorry. Yeah, thank you. Tonight, we're going to kick off the FY22 budget with the timeline and guidelines for approval tonight. So some of our key dates. Last week, we met with the two members of the board that are on the Budget Committee, President Mickelson and Member Baker, and went through these, developed these for consideration of the full board tonight. Also, other key dates then are a month from then, are the 4th of December. We'll have the enrollment projections finalized. We're pretty close to that right now. But we'll have them finalized for the folks who prepare those budgets that are based on the number of students. Shortly after that, on the 9th, we'll meet with the directors and coordinators and distribute the worksheets and review this process that we're going to get approved tonight. On the 4th, we're going to ask everybody to have their Level 4 or if they're only doing one level. Some of those federal programs want to do one level. Budgets estimated, I mean, have them in the system so we can see what our five-year plan would look like. Rolling that forward, we can get, you know, if we just funded everything as is, but, you know, what it takes next year to do what we're doing this year. And so we can get a look at that in early January. And then on the 1st, we're going to ask them to have the draft of all their levels prepared so we can take a first look at that as well. More key dates on the 6th. All budgets are due on the 11th. That's the last day of the main run of the legislature. So we will be able to do a preliminary revenue based on that. Of course, in the general fund, when you throw, when you don't count the federal money, which is not discretionary, but that's it. But if you take out the federal money, about 90% of our revenue is based on what that state aid formula looks like. So that's why we have to wait till the session is over to get a good fix on that. On the 18th, the K-12 Budget Review Committee, it's about 22 folks, made up of the two board members on the Budget Committee, central administrators, principals from each level, teachers from each level, sped teacher as well. That's about it. But it's about 22 folks that will sit in on that Budget Review Committee and then come up with a recommendation for the full board. Shortly after that, on the 31st, we'll have our first of two public work sessions. We were going to do that last year, but COVID wiped out kind of the rest of our meetings. But we'll have the first, we'll present it to you initially. Then we'll give you the board some time to look it over, come up with some other questions and other that you can't think of. And then, you know, in the hour or two that we go through this. And then send those in, and we'll bring the right people to the next meeting to answer those questions a week later. That's your regular April work session date. And then the regular first meeting in, Monday meeting, you know, on the second Monday, on the 12th of April, we will go through and have a tentative adoption. We try to get that done by the 15th. That's your time for continuing contracts and all that good stuff. And it also allows then Becky and her crew to go out and recruit and hire teachers. If you want to get going on that early, you don't want to wait till July. Let's put it that way for that. And then, of course, the final adoption is the annual meeting, which is the 12th of July. The budget guidelines are in your materials as well. Some key ones that I just point out. We always try to allocate district resources to the direct achievement of the school district mission and strategic plan. We strive to maintain class sizes at all costs. And then, of course, with the exception of those Level 1 packets, which are listed there, we are going to require, again, a 90% of program, which would be a 10% cut, a 95% of program, and a 98% of program. We have some minimums and maximums in those as well. So we're going to say whichever one is closest, depending on the size of your budget, have one of those actually be a 1% cut. So for some of those, that would be Level 3. But for some of those big ones, that would be Level 1. Some of those are real big, you know, Jeff Kreider's Operational Services budget is one of the larger ones that we have. And then the three instruction packets are those as well. Of course, you'll prepare one, you'll prepare a budget, Level 4, we call it, at 100% of the current level program. And then expansion budgets may be submitted. They're certainly not required, but they may be submitted as well. We're going to ask them to prepare an impact on program narrative that is specific and relates to the district's goals and strategies. So we can always see what goals and our strategies will be affected by a change in the budget, either cutting it or increasing it. And then a central team in the Committed Funds Packet is going to prepare some specific line item cuts that might be bigger across more than one budget packet, just for the board to have some options there as well. And then at the budget, and then at the Budget Review Committee level, that's that group that's going to meet in the middle of March, recommend funding priorities that support the district's strategic plan. Then we're going to draw that line of where we think the revenue is going to come in and where, how much fund balance we're willing to dip into in line with the five-year plan. And then anything within $500,000 either side of that line, we'll go through it in great detail and get those prioritized. So if you move that line up or down, those items will have been carefully considered that are close to it. And then kind of hinted at that. But the last one is we'll prepare revenue deficit options to align with the five-year plan. If we're not coming in the way we think we are, that's the way we thought we were last year when we passed the budget, we'll come up with some options to try to fix that as well. So that is, in a nutshell, I guess, the timeline and guidelines. We would ask that you approve the FY22 budget guidelines and timelines as presented, and I'd stand by for questions.
Thank you, Todd. And will those guidelines be on the finance page on the district website? Or some easy for?
Yeah, we can get them out there on the budget page.
That'd be awesome. So people can kind of just look at those and that timeline, too. As you can see, this is an extensive process. I believe we've been told correctly from the governor's office, approximately 1.5%.
Yeah, that's the hope, is that, that's what the inflation factor was, or the index factor. So that, there's optimism that we will receive that, yes.
Any other questions for Todd?
No, just, I just want to speak to Todd in the process. He really has put together a robust process. And I think there's three primary reasons why it's robust. The first one is that there are several points of contact where people can give voice to what the budget ultimately looks like. Number two, the key guidelines connect really the budget with the strategic plan planning of the district. And the third, at the end of the day, it's student-focused. It really looks at the best interest of the student's educational experience. There's a lot of thought put into it, so thanks, Todd.
Thank you. And we do have about 18 committees with about, that are comprised of about 150 people that actually prepare, do the hard work of preparing these, and they've spent a lot of time and a lot of work.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the FY22 budget timeline and guidelines?
So, second.
I have a motion and a second. Board member Tulkey.
Aye.
Board member Baker.
Aye.
Board member Ryder.
Aye.
Board member Parker.
Aye.
And board member Mickelson.
Aye.
They are approved. Todd, do you have something else? We're doing policy next, aren't we? Are you, Kate or Carly, are you handling? Thank you.
Hey, so we've got three policies tonight. These are GBEA nepotism, GBEAA employee conflict of interest, and GBH, staff participation in community activities. As part of our process, these just came up for regular review, but no changes were recommended. So I just moved to review, revise the three policies, unless anyone wants to discuss.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on review and revise of the policies, GBEA, GBAA, and GBH. Board member Tulkey. I'll move on. Board member Baker.
Aye.
Board member Ryder.
Aye.
Board member Parker.
Aye.
Board member Mickelson.
Aye.
Board member Tulkey.
Aye.
Thank you. That is, those are approved. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Administration was asked to prepare a resolution for additional staff compensation, and you have that before you right now. I think it speaks for itself. I would just ask that whoever makes the motion reads the resolution, and I can be around for questions if there are any.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and read it. Whereas, the Sioux Falls School Board recognizes that its highly-trained and committed workforce is its number-one resource. And whereas, the board makes decisions in line with the district's mission to educate and prepare each student to succeed in a changing world. And whereas, the board recognizes employees have gone above and beyond job descriptions in preparing for and implementing the district's Return to Learn Plan. And whereas, the board recognizes the value of protecting its number-one resource involves compensating employees to the greatest extent possible within the confines of the state aid formula. Whereas, to that end, for the last three years, the Sioux Falls School Board has funded all employee groups at the state rate plus 0.75%. And whereas, due to COVID-19 and the uncertainty of state revenues and their potential negative effect on state aid, the board approved a budget that funded the employee groups at the state rate 2% during the current year. And whereas, since the approval of the district's FY21 budget, the state aid rate has been stabilized, and the governor released $500 per student of One Time CARES Act funding to help school districts defray the costs of safely returning to learning. And whereas, the board maintains its desire to increase the base salary by 0.75% for all employee groups. And now therefore be resolved, the board directs the administration to prepare the new salary, FY21 salary schedules inflated by 0.75%. And the board directs the administration to pay all staff who are employed as of November 20, 2020, and will receive in their November paycheck the entire 0.75% increase, including back pay and forward-looking pay for FY21. And the board directs that all 0.75 FTE staff or greater receive a one-time minimum increase of $800, per 0.75% increase plus additional bonus equals at least $800, per, comma, and all other regularly-employed staff, per non-sub, comma, nontemporary, per, receive a minimum payment of $400. And the board additionally approves a December health insurance premium holiday for premiums withheld in November for, in behalf of all current employees on the health plan. I commend Todd and administration for all the work on figuring this all out, for the numbers to work. The premium health plan is a minimum, I believe, of 98, 20, if you're single, and up to 300 and some if you're on the family plan. So that's an additional amount on the $800 that people who are paying their insurance will have. Plus, going forward into fiscal '22, that 0.75% will be added on to the pay schedule for our employees. I think this is a fabulous plan because it not only gives the stipend across the board for everyone, plus moves the schedule forward, plus gives a premium holiday to help with bills coming up here in the December months. So thank you very much. Any other comments? And do I have a second?
I should say, second.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would just agree. I, you know, we haven't been in schools because we're limiting the people who are in our schools.
I, you know, we haven't been in schools because we're limiting the people who are in our schools. But we all have, our students have teachers, and we have friends who are teachers, neighbors, people that we see frequently. And not just teachers, but our custodians and our EAs and our cafeteria workers. And everybody really has gone above and beyond and are really working hard to keep our kids healthy, to keep our kids in school, and to keep our kids learning. And so I'm grateful that we are able to show a bit of our appreciation for that. I don't know that any amount of money is ever going to be able to show how much we really appreciate, but anything that we are able to give, I think, is certainly a gesture of thanks and appreciation for the work that they've done so far. And hopefully, we can continue to do as we push through every week of this school year and doing everything we can to keep our kids in school.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none?
I was so sorry. I was just going to echo everything that you guys have said. But I wanted to say myself, just thank you to, well, first of all, to Todd and the administration again for figuring this out, but also to all of our teachers and staff that are just working tirelessly every day to educate our kids, whether it's online or in the classroom. I know it hasn't been an easy few months, but we're doing a great job. And I really just want to commend everybody, so, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we all hear you, we see you, we read your emails. We know the stress you all are undergoing, and we want to recognize that and know that we're here for you. So thank you very much. I will now take roll call vote. Board member Tulkey.
Abstain.
He has a wife that is an employee, so he's not in favor of this because I want to make sure the public knows that. Board member Baker.
Aye.
Board member Ryder.
Aye.
Board member Parker.
Aye.
Board member Mickelson, aye. It passes four votes yes and one abstention from board member Tulkey. Anything else for the good of the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjournment, board member Tulkey.
Aye.
Board member Baker.
Aye.
Board member Ryder.
Aye.
Board member Parker.
Aye.
And board member Mickelson. We are adjourned. Thank you.